Am I really live? Alright, well, welcome, welcome. This is, I was just looking at my section here. I'm working on this portion of my class that I'm taking at Harvard's online school here. Let's see, let me show you. This course is called the Architectural Imagination and it's Harvard University's online education program, which is awesome. They have all kinds of different course subjects. But I was searching around trying to do some sort of continuing education stuff. I'm trying to keep, you know, I turn sixty tomorrow, yes. I made it to sixty. Well, I guess I better be, better not jinx it. I should make it to sixty. I never thought I would. When I was twenty, I was like, I'm never gonna make sixty, man. Anyway, this is an awesome course and like I was saying, I love looking for educational opportunities. And I try to, I do these to keep my mind fresh and learn. You know, I've always loved architecture. I'm a design build contractor now. I've spent, out of the forty-two years I've been in the industry, seven or eight were spent working in architecture about twenty years ago. And of course, I started my company Artists and Construction LLC about that long ago. And so it's been interesting getting to this point. And I was thinking, you know, I hadn't really taken many classes lately. If you're interested, you can go to my website for at drafting.com. And you can kind of get a feel for down here, just so people can know, since I'm not a licensed architect, I've got these, you know, certifications and things. But this, this is not to brag, this is just to show people that, you know, I've made an effort over the years to, you know, keep, keep your, keep my mind fresh, okay? And also, there's all, all kinds of questions for, you know, professional liability, that kind of stuff. And some of those I take, you know, as continuing education courses. But of course, architects are required to take continuing education courses. And this is a great one for them. They could fly through a course like this where it's a little more difficult for somebody like, like me, you know. I forgot to turn off my air conditioner, hold on a second. I'm in my tiny house that I built. And it only has one source of heat and air and it's noisy. But anyway, so just briefly, you can see these green checkmarks are what I've completed. So we've got Form and History. I've actually completed this introduction for some reason. It, this won't take, but it was an exercise. And all it was really, all you had to do is really label this plan. Again, this was the very early part of the course. You can see here, I've completed it for some reason. It's just not showing it. But anyway, it's not a, not a big deal. And now I have to go back. There we go. So I was just gonna try to give you an idea of some of the subject matter. You know, here's reading architecture. This dealt with classical architecture. You know, Greek, Roman, and then moving into the, you know, the era of the cathedrals, that kind of thing. And then we've got here another architectural history. And each, it's kind of cool. Each one has these lectures that are just awesome by different. This Michael Hayes of Harvard is doing most of the, most of the lectures. And they're just really well done. And I'm really excited about this. And let's see if I can go back this time without. So anyway, I've completed all this. I've got typology, technology. This is a very interesting couple of sections here talking about how the onslaught of, you know, steel and glass and concrete affected architecture, you know, throughout that modern era, you know, starting in the forties and fifties, it seemed like. And so anyway, that's, that's deals with that. Then we get into this other, these other sections. And what I'm in now is this section where this Lacoubasseire, Stair. This is a Tennessean trying to speak French. Talks about these, these five points that he identified. I'm calling it the five-point house. And let's just go to the drawing. I've got notes here that I've taken or I've screenshotted. Let's see, let's go to my work view here. And all my stuff will show up. Here we go. This, these are notes that I've taken. So the, the five, the five points on this particular exercise is stressing are the the pilote, pilote, which are basically in Tennessee language, pilasters or columns or piers. And you can see here that the, the programming said we needed a row of pilotes. Pilote, that you, you can pronounce it depending on what, what dialect you're using. Italian or American English. The pilote, I like that one, or pilotes. I thought pilotes was, I heard that, I heard one pronunciation. Anyway, basically, it's basically the piers, feature, the feature of the piers. And the roof garden, which I'll show in a second. The free plan is the concept that was allowed by the pilotees. The columns and the concrete floor slabs, which were structural slabs that allowed there to be no interior load bearing walls. Then the ribbon wall, the ribbon window, which if I go to my front elevation, you'll see are these, okay? And we were given a, well, I'll go into that in a second. So these are ribbon windows and these, these ribbon windows were allowed because of the next feature or the free facade, okay? The facade is basically a wrapper because of the, the, the structural qualities you gain from the pilotee and the floor slabs, which are supported by the columns and these party walls on each side. These, I'll show you part of the program here in a second. But the program called for two party walls on either end, which supported these floor slabs. And if I remove, if I remove my tags here, my layers, if I remove those walls, you can see kind of how this is working, okay? And so these ribbon windows are allowed because there's, the, the walls, the wall sections above and below them are not structural. So normally, in construction where we have, we would have a beam that would have to go across the top, a header, it would end up being a beam if it was this long. This is like thirty feet. Ten meters minus a couple meter, minus about a half a meter. But anyway, so that free facade is allowed because of the structure that's created by the pilotee. I just love that word if you can't, if you can't tell. And so those were the five points. That's why I'm calling this the five-point house of this prompt, this, this exercise. So what we, here's our program. The site is ten meters by ten meters. And it's got, that both sides have party walls, like I was saying. And the house should be an elegant box lifted above the ground on the party walls to each side and a line of three pilotee placed on this, on a center line, creating a dominant symmetry, okay? And then we, it goes on to say, the, the ground floor should contain only, and I hadn't seen this term before, compressed organ. And that's why I'm taking this class. Which houses an entry hall and a stair to the main levels, okay? Then you have parking and then the first level by the ground was going to be bedrooms and a ba- a bathroom. And it's just mentioning that this arrangement inverts the normal arrangement of living room on the first floor, like this particular architect, gushes, gushes. I've learned that nothing is, is pronounced the way it appears. So you have to be careful. On the main second level, there should be living room, dining area, kitchen, small toilet room. Okay, so this is literally what we would do when we start designing a house for somebody or building. We create this program with the owner. This is literally what we do. All these, all the, it all starts, for me, it starts with an email. If you go here and you say, request service, okay? I have a form you fill out and you basically can program your project right there, okay? To a certain extent. And so this is, and of course, architects have a more, you know, involved system of programming. They're professionally trained. I have only, I've worked for architects, so I've absorbed what I could. So we would start out with this written program. And from that written program, of course, I didn't mention the, the upper level has the dining room, a living room, I guess I did. And then we have this roof terrace on the, on the roof level. So from that, I developed these plans. That's what we do first. We, here's the first floor plan. You can see that this is our main entry lobby or foyer, entry area. And we were supposed to have a utility area. And here's the stair coming up. It's cut. That's a cut mark there to, so we can show what's under the stair. The cut is about five feet off the floor. And so you can see this is the parking area. And I've got these little garden areas. It called for garden areas at the front and back. And you'll see that in a second. I should have my site plan turned on. Where's the site? And plants, hmm. Not sure what happened to my plants. But this is, I actually started out with this sort of property line look where this is ten meters and ten meters. And yes, I gave in and every now and then I'll do a project in, in metric so I can kind of stay fresh on that too. So I challenged myself. And then so our second plan here, they wanted us to do two bedrooms, a bathroom. And I'm still trying to keep it open. So this is the stairwell coming up, the open, that's open to below. This is a nice big open area here. But, you know, we still have to be practical. We have to have rooms and rooms have to have closets, so. Shower, toilet, right? You gotta fit all that into the program. Then the third floor is the interesting area of, I've got, my stairwell comes up here. And you'll see this better in 3D here in a minute. And I've got the kitchen, a galley kitchen, the dining here. The, it wanted to, to call for a potty room on this level. So I put it there and the living area here. I've got the public sort of spaces here and the private, you know, sort of spaces in the back. And then kitchen, galley kitchen. And then this is a library here. And I've got this one wall here. I'll show you in a minute. I think, you know, that you could put art. You could put furniture against it or you could put art there. I thought that might be kind of neat to have a, a wall to separate that. And then on the roof plan, I don't have anything shown there except for the stair and the, the penthouse, but I'll show you that here in a second. So if we go to this work view I've got, I've got this work view set up so the exterior walls are turned off so you can see. Let's see if we have anybody watching. Not yet, but it's okay. I just wanted to make this to kind of go over the course in case anybody else is interested. And so what I like to do is I like to put my plans on the level on the floor slab, you can see. So I can coordinate my walls and stair and columns. And you can see here, if we go down on the first level, this is where the cars would be parked off the street. This is literally the street here. And you come through the entry here. Go up the stairs. Get trapped inside the walls, gotta be careful. Let's go around this way. It's easier to see. So you come in, the entry and go up the stair. And if I turn off that floor plan, it's, it's a much more dramatic effect. Let's turn, there you go. Notice I got a, I got a line here I need to delete. Just get rid of that. Yeah. So this part of the floor is cut out obviously. And, you know, be open to below. And I've got to put, I'm not really finished. I was just wanted to, I was gonna work on this some today. But I need a handrail here obviously to keep you from walking off there. And this is one of the bedrooms. So what I'm trying to do is keep this, this idea of transparency with the glazing. And so if I go back and turn on my windows, you can see that if you're standing in the bedroom, you have privacy, but you'll still be able to, to stand and look out even, even, you know, to the very end like that. So I didn't, I didn't want to just put walls to, one of the, one of the faux pas we're talking about here is the fact that we have these nice floor slabs and, and a free plan that allows us to have non-load bearing walls. And then you go in here and, you know, plaster, plaster a lot of walls and create your mouse maze. But in the end, you know, practicality says, you know, we gotta have a bedroom with the, you know, most people want a privacy and a closet. You could just have one wall between the bedrooms and then have wardrobes, you know, furniture. But again, there's all these worldly requirements, you know, real, realtors want to see closets. So they can say you've got bedrooms, you know, the, the industry. And this is part of what we're talking about too in the course is how the, how, how culture and industry affects design, you know? I know some architects that wouldn't have any walls on this level, on any of these levels. They would just have, you know, futons and chairs and, you know what I mean? So it's kind of funny. I think it's funny. But, um, so here we are on the third floor. I've got my little galley kitchen here. Again, I'm not finished. I'm just kind of roughing it out here. And I've got a fireplace on this party wall in the living area. And then this is, this will be my library. I gotta draw all the shelves here. And then I put my chairs in there. So I think it's gonna be interesting now. One thing I gained was, one thing I, one complaint I had about this whole thing was with the three-story and, and this much square footage, you really should have three bedrooms. I mean, maybe this is an American idea, right? But, so what I did was, I've got this spare room that could be an office or a study or even a bedroom, right? But I've kept it open by, you know, having this glazing, this glazed wall here. So that if you wanted to use it as an office, you're, you can actually do this. If you wanted to go crazy with the glass, you could actually do these walls. But that's a bonus room. That is not in the program. Hoping I'll get extra credit for that. But you can see here, on the level that we were supposed to have living room, dining room, kitchen and a small toilet, doesn't mention anything about a bonus room. So I'm fishing here for some, for some love here from the, from the, from the professors at Harvard. But anyway, so if you, then, then this, this stairwell is kind of, hopefully it's gonna, it'll be dramatic. If I turn, let me turn off that floor plan and the windows again. Turn off that and the floor plan. Third floor plan. You can see here, this will be a nice open area. You'll come up the stair and then you'll be able to go back up to the roof garden there, or you can come in and enjoy this space. I'm thinking about, well, I was thinking about making the kitchen a little smaller. So this, so the areas in the front and back seem bigger. But again, we were given these constraints of thirty by thirty here. And so, you know, it's what we have to work with. And I, I kind of envisioned this as some European street, you know, with row houses, you know? Cause these are party wall. These party walls are what we refer to as a wall that would separate buildings from each other, right? So you would have, at one time, I actually had them copied up here just to see what they would look like all in a row. And so that party wall is a two-hour wall that separates, you know, live dwelling units. So that was our constraint. And then up on the roof, I thought it would be cool just to have some benches with some planters on the backs of them and a tree. Let me turn the windows back on. It's kind of making a, a little penthouse. There we go. And just thought that was awesome, kind of cool. So we will see. And one thing I have to do is we have to have a plan. We have to represent the house in four plans. You must include at least one street side elevation and one interior elevation on the main wall of the living area. So what I was doing was kind of doing this section as my elevations. So I've got this right side section. It's kind of an interior elevation. And then I've got the opposite side section left. Spinner around. And I'm gonna go ahead and put some furniture in here. And you know, kind of dress it up a little bit. But here's my old gardens. You can see I've got the, I've got it shown on the plan view. I don't know why that wasn't showing up earlier. But there'll just be plants here. And again, of course, thirty, thirty foot or three meters. I guess it's like thirty-two feet or something. It's funny, cause I have to do this, I had to do this, go to, you know, the Google page that converted feet to meters for the inches and to keep up with that. But here, basically a parking pad. And then a little garden here. And then of course, we don't know, we weren't told what was behind, behind these. I'm assuming there's at least an alley or another road. Or it could be just an alley and another row of these row houses. So what I was gonna do is see, let me go back to this work, work view here. I was gonna see if I could find some furniture on sofa on 3D warehouse. And this is kind of cool. Well, this is one of the coolest things about SketchUp is all of the all of the models, you know, like this that have been put into the warehouse that you can just pop into your drawing. Of course, it gets kind of, I don't know, it, it, it takes some time because you have to kind of fish through all of the contemporary stuff trying to find the modern furniture. And it may not be worth, if I don't see something here soon that I like. I don't know how plush we want to go. I was hoping to find that sectional, just an L shape. And of course, that doesn't, that's not exactly a modern theme, but it's more contemporary. But anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll mess with that. Especially if I've got anybody making any comments. If you all have any questions or suggestions, but here's this wall. I think what I was doing, what I was debating on this wall was whether to actually have the wall or not, because, you know, we were trying to keep this an open plan. But what would be kind of cool, I think, is because it's really kind of a dead spot anyway. I don't think it would hurt to have a wall there that you could put. It's going to the flare. This, this group and we'll put it there. And we'll just see. Let's just make it. Okay, why is it doing that? We're trying to pull you up. There we go. Two meters. Let's see. Two meters is six and a half, so we'd have to go up like a point five. Like that. Maybe, I was trying to leave a gap. You know, that seems a bit, that seems a bit too close. I don't know why this is being a little laggy on me. I've got the shadows turned on for one thing. But and then what did I do? Messed up this wall, didn't I? Yeah. Now that it, now that that's back to normal, let's do this again. If I wanted to go up to seven feet, that's two point one. Yeah, I had, had two meters, which didn't quite seem tall enough. So let's go back down and we'll go two point one. Two point one meters. Let's go up. Let's go up point oh five, just a little bit more. So anyway, you can play around with the height of this wall. And I thought what would be cool would be to create a group out of it. And we could, you know, put some, let's see if, if modern art, let's see if warehouse, 3D warehouse has any modern. There's something. Let's see what we've got here. Let's see what we've got here. Uh, we're not gonna get fussy about this. We're just gonna try this. Does that look like products might be a better choice? Aha, here we go. Better baby. Uh-oh, that seems like a big thing. What the heck? That is not exactly what I was looking for. I was just looking at the covers. Let's try one more time. So yeah, okay. So here we go. We'll just pick something generic. Here we go. There we go. We'll just put this on there. We'll just scale it so it fits. Why is that? Oh, look here. We got our advertisement in there. Lock, you got it locked? I don't think anybody would expect me to keep that in my, in there. So you can just forget that. But now let's go out. And we will turn this. What, what's going on here? Here we go. It actually looks like it's not, uh, yeah, it's not, uh. Okay, why? Why is it that people? I don't get why some people produce these. I'm trying to get it lined up with the wall. I don't Trying to get it lined up with the wall. I don't understand why people, look at that, it keeps flipping back. What, what? Okay, so. Matter of fact, I just explode your butt. Sorry, I'm getting all Tennessee on you. Uh, for some reason I keep, uh, I'm trying to get it lined up with this wall. And this always happens to me when I want to do something different. Is in my live streams, some kind of little grim little show up now. I'm not even touching my mouse, but I gotta move it now. I'm just trying to get it now where it's close to the middle. Let me get, uh. Brother, oh brother. Now it's normal. There we go. Now let's back up, let's go to my, since I keep getting stuck inside the column. Let's bring it down. And for some reason. One point five and then we'll recenter it. We paid for the extra big version. I'm getting ready to turn off these floors and columns, cause I keep getting stuck inside. I keep getting stuck inside the. Floor and I'm getting frustrated here with it. There, now let's back up and see what that looks like. There we go. So you know what I mean? I know that was kind of silly to spend that much time on that, but. I guess I'm trying to demonstrate that having, um. Having a wall like that would be kind of neat, uh, where you're just, you're just circulating around this area. You know, coming from the living area to the, to the. Library anyway, so why not take advantage? Um, and as long as you're not blocking the light. You can see here, it's casting a very minimal shadow. So. Hey, where are you located? I'm in Tennessee. Out in the woods, can you get extra credit if you substitute Lam- Lambo? For the concrete? Lambo? Bamboo? Well, the, the, um. The, um, the concrete slabs are necessary for the structural aspect of it. Now you could put, uh, you could put bamboo, uh, like a floating bamboo on top of it if you wanted to. Um, yeah, you could put any kind of finishes you wanted in there. I think what, what, what they're trying to get us to look at is just the. The taking advantage of the free plan created. Uh, by the fact that you, you don't have to have any load bearing interior walls. Uh, so there's, you know, there's five, there's five points they're trying to stress on this. And. And that's part of the assignment. If you came in late. Uh. I've got this kind of a. View where I'm looking at my notes here. This is the program that, that, uh. That the course had, uh, for this exercise. And this is what we were given, so we had to create something. And so I created these plans. And then I brought the three D model up from that. Let me turn my heater off, it's getting, getting warm in here. So. I don't know, it's not a very large, um. Area, it's, you know, um. Ten meters is only, like I said, thirty-two feet, so it's not a huge, it's not a huge house, so you have to be careful. It, the, the, the challenge to me was especially on this second level where. The bedrooms had to be placed, you know, keeping an open plan is difficult. And I guess if you wanted to, you could put more glazing, but it would kind of, you know, separating the bedrooms and do away with this. Closet area and just put a single wall and then put wardrobes in there. But again, in, in, in America, I don't know if this is in Europe. You know, it's one thing if it's in America, it's another. If you went to sell this two million dollar home and you didn't have. Something you could legally call a bedroom, which has to have a closet in the realtor, real estate world. Uh, you would, you would, it would, it would kind of, you know, you would have to just be, uh, super wealthy and not have to worry about the value. Because you wouldn't get credit for it being two bedrooms. If you didn't create two bedrooms, so you'd have a two million dollar. Big living space without, you know, technically any bedrooms. But I did get this kind of bonus room in here, which I, I see as a, as a home office, or you could have a guest. You could have a. Old Murphy bed, again, you know, in a cabinet here on this wall. That folded down for guests, so, and then, you know. Uh, of course you don't have a closet, so you can't technically call it a bedroom for the realtor world, but. You know, at least it is an extra bedroom you could use. Get rid of that, that, but this is the course. I've got, uh, just a few more sections to go here. I haven't even explored these yet. Um. But I've got till December seventh to finish this course. And, and it's been pretty awesome. This has actually been the toughest assignment so far. So the next thing I'll do is just to try to get some progress going. I'll look at this prompt, this, this course, this, uh, section requirement. And what I'll do is I'll start, um. I'll bring up layout, which is our, in SketchUp, it is the software you use to create construction documents. And normally what I do is I'll just go pick out a, uh. Oh, what am I gonna do? I'll pick out a small job that has the title block. That I want, I don't think, this is a newer version of SketchUp, but I don't think I have, uh. I don't think I've put my templates in here yet. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have my template saved, so what I have to do is go back. And pick out a small job I've done. Uh, this house, this house is a small, this is a small addition that I did. And so what I did do is I, I closed this, but. Um, so this is an addition. That we're going to do, it's a mother-in-law addition. To a house and it, it actually had to be simple and match the existing house, so I couldn't really do anything architectural here. So it's, it's just a, it's more of a construction job than it is anything else. But what I would normally do here is just, um. Just zap. I would, I would probably, yeah, zap this one. And. I don't need a site plan, I'm going to put the site plan as a. Let's see, uh, delete. So then I'll, then all I have to do is kind of edit these. I'll just. Delete all this stuff. And I know this may seem kind of silly, but this is the, this is the sheet I want. Um. And then what I'll do is I'll save this as. Uh, I'll go to my course. Folder. Down here somewhere, E D X, where is it? E D X. Harbor, let's see, architecture class, I'm just gonna save it as. Five-point house, that's what I'm calling it. Save it. And then what I do is I'll take and let me save this. And I will bring in. Insert. The, where am I? Here we go. And I've set up the, I've set the scenes up already, so first floor plan. And I need to go in here and fix some of these, so if I've got a first floor plan. I need to set this on. I like this, I like this, working in this view because it's not so hard on the eyes at first. But when I get ready to do the construction documents, what I'll do is I'll go in here and. Change the style to this. Construction document style. And then it'll look more like a sh- you know, paper, a paper drawing, so I'll update that. Go to my second floor plan. Update that. Therefore plan. Roof plan. And I need to do some work on the, uh, the roof plan. And now I can save this and go back. To layout and I can update the model reference. And it should, it'll change it, there we go. Then I can go to SketchUp model and I want to preserve the scale. Get this, now I'm gonna set the scale first, so. What I'm gonna do here is double click, or not double click, but click on it and then. Go to scale, I want to do it in quarter inch. So it should be smaller, yeah. Let's see, I might do it. I might do it in a larger scale. Oh, you know what I'm gonna do though? I have to do this in metric. I'm having to think here. So what is, what is metric? What would be the closest? What do they do? In metric? I don't even know. I want you to look that up. Uh. I can't, like the architectural scale, uh. Like the architectural scale in, in, in the U S is quarter, for plans is quarter inch equals a foot. And I knew I was gonna get pictures of. Let's see, what are standard scales in architecture? See here, quarter inch equals a foot. Uh. But how does that, how does that convert to? So it would be, but I, I, I know what quarter inch, I know what the relationship is, but how do they? How do they, um. Notate it, annotate it? How do you use metric scales? This is probably something I should do. Imperial, okay, here we go, this is a good reference. One inch, quarter, I don't, they don't have, okay, all they have is one to five, which is three, three inches equals a foot. So anyway, I'll, I'll deal with that later. What I'm gonna do now is just bring in. The reason I needed to know was because. What I'd like to be able to do is turn off this. Preserve scale. Why is it lagging? I guess it's because I'm live streaming. Um. Never fails. Let's do the scale back to a quarter inch equals a foot. And then what I'll do, okay, let's see here. I thought that scale looked awful small, that was the problem I was having. Was I didn't understand why the scale was so small and sometimes in SketchUp, uh, and layout, when you pick. The scale. Cause what I gotta do is I gotta do the first. And then I gotta do the second floor plan and then I gotta do the, this would be the. That would be the roof and then this would be, you know, the. And I was gonna try to do all the plans on one sheet, cause I didn't want to submit something that was, you know, ten sheets. Uh. So then what I would do is this would be, this scene would be, uh, second floor plan. Not sure. What's going on there? Let's see, it went back to. I don't understand, sometimes it, sometimes that it doesn't make much sense. And you just gotta keep, so there we go, you gotta keep selecting it. So that's the second floor plan, this should be the third floor plan. Scene, third floor plan. And why it's doing that, I don't know, why it's. Why? Cause if I go to third floor plan here. It's obvious, let's save. Okay. We go back here. Update model reference. Yeah, I don't, sometimes hitting this reset all button. Yeah, and see, I don't understand, it's weird, so I'm gonna go back to scale, go to quarter inch. Okay, well, we know that's not right, we'll hit the scale again. And see, it went to eighth inch that time, so it's maybe the third time's the charm, there we go. And then this would be, let's do update model reference first. And then we will do scene and we'll do roof, roof plan. Yeah, I don't know why it's disappearing like that. Now watch it, it'll go to eighth inch scale. I'm gonna put it on quarter inch and it's gonna go to eighth inch. Maybe not. Let's hit the reset all button. I usually don't have this problem, I think this has to do with the fact that I'm using another job. But, and I have a, uh. You can see it keeps wanting to jump to that eighth inch scale. Now, there we go. So now what I have to do is. Get these lined up. With one another. I'm gonna move this one back over a little bit. And then, um. Then what I'll do is I'll, let's see that, I gotta get this down. First not covering up my line up there. So anyway, I'll lay those out and then I'll put dimensions, I'll put my. I'm gonna bring this to the forefront, bring to front. I gotta label each one. And once I find out what, how to notate that, um. That's scale. I'll, I'll fix that. And then this will all be set up on a sheet. And then I will have a. Elevations page and a sections page. But I won't bore you with that, I just kind of wanted to give you an idea. This is a twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheet here. And I have my, you know, my title box there, I think what I'm gonna do here is delete my AT drafting dot com. AT-Drafting.com logo, and just make it generic, I don't think they're gonna, I don't want them to think I'm trying to advertise. And then I'll, I'm gonna put here, this will be A1. This will be, uh. Plans, or four plans. Whenever, we'll figure out what to put there. Should probably just say plans, and then, again, I'll put some basic dimensions, I'll put some section marks on there. I've got, uh, I've got a section mark right here, I can put, I've got some stuff, oh, here's a door schedule, I usually edit in the window. Window schedule, I'll edit and put them on the sheet if I need to, um, depending on what job it is. So anyway, I just wanted to kinda show how we do our sheets, the printed drawings, like this. And sometimes I'll show perspectives, as a matter of fact, my section. If I just create another page here, I can bring in. Just to give you an idea of what the section's gonna look like. And this is gonna be the, I'll do the right section first. And that turned out good, so maybe it's just, uh. Hopefully it's just that one sheet that was kinda buggy. I'll put it right here. And then I'll put the other section. And I probably just won't, I probably won't do these too much of a scale, 'cause I like the way these are filling up the sheet. Just move them up a little bit, and this'll be the left. Scene, left. Section. Other side. Preserve scale, if you don't click that preserve scale button, when you resize the window, it will, it will give it a new scale. There would be my new, oops. I'll get them lined up, obviously. And I'll put my. Title marks on there. We'll just go steal them from here. And I'll go back and label them. In a bit. So it's just a process, you know, this is the, sort of the grinding work of construction documents, it's just this kinda stuff where. You know, it was fun to kinda design the model and, you know, do all the fun stuff. But this is kinda the, the grind of it, you know, uh, 'cause, you know, now I gotta go, uh. Get the title, let's see, does it have the title, oh, yeah. These are the elements that don't get copied from page to page. Paste there, oops. Why didn't that? Copy. Paste the current layer, there we go. Sections. Yeah, I think I wanna make this sections. This would be A2. So that's kinda the grind, you know. See if we got any questions? Any questions or comments? Hey Barrett, my man, working on my class. Barrett's a good son. He's got, his channel's awesome, he's, uh, uh, he's, he has a, a business called, uh, well, it's a music instruction business. Insane rhythm, uh, music, and his channel focuses a lot on that, and he's a professional drummer. Uh, he's awesome. And I'm, I know I'm biased, but whatever. So. Like I was saying, that, this is kinda the, you know, the fun part, where you wanna hang out and, and, uh. And the, with the fun, you know, do the fun stuff, but eventually we have to do the work, and that's when we go over to. Our two-dimensional world, here and start, I think I wanna move these over, um. And this is, this is part of my problem too, I can't, I have a hard time leaving stuff alone. You know, I'm just trying to keep tweaking and tweaking it until I, when I stand back and look at the page, I just want it to look good. And the other thing you wanna do is look to see that your elements are reading well, you know. There's kinda two different settings in, in SketchUp where. If you select one of these, this raster version is a little more grainy, because it's based on a, a raster image. But then you can do vector, I mean, hybrid, which is usually what I choose, and you'll see that it gets darker, the lines get darker and heavier. But it takes that more memory. And you can see it's thinking, thinking. I didn't think it was gonna take that long though. You may just be watching a live breakdown in the system here. Sometimes when it does this, it'll. Ain't gonna say it. There we go, thank you, Jesus, save it, save it before you lose it. When it gets through spinning around, here we go, I'm gonna zoom in, I don't know if you can tell the difference, but like, see these lines? It's kinda jagged and it's not perfect, you know, and you go over here, these lines are nice and solid. And, uh, what's another good example? It's typically on your lines, they won't be, they won't be, you know, see there's a little, a jagged edge there. And that's, this is the raster version, you, oh, this is a good example here, that, that version of the line, there, that edge. If you go over here, it's gonna be nice and crisp. So, but the problem is that it eats up memory and, uh, while you're working, so normally what I'll do. Is I'll leave it on the raster side until. Now, if I were to check, if I were to check full vector, then I'd, I'd be waiting, I'd be sitting here for five minutes waiting on it to, to render. But if you, if, um, if you leave it on raster, you can work, and then right before I go live with the drawings, right before I. Cop, you know, create the PDF versions of these twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheets, I'll hit that button and I'll just sit here and wait on it to, to, to render. But you can see here, even the shadows, uh, look better, I don't know if you can see. That's a shadow, these are shadows, let's see what the shadows look like over here. Of course, these are opposite sides of the building. Actually, the shadows don't, didn't change much, well, this looks smoother, there's a smoother transition there. So, you know, sometimes it doesn't seem worth it, uh, the, uh, the risk of, you know, your model crashing. Which it has happened before, and I actually have a really decent computer, it's a, it's a, um, GE seventy-six Raider. I mean, it's got a, um, RTX. Dedicated graphics card, so it's just, this, this, when you get into the rendering of these. Three D, you know, drawings, it's, it can get, one, one of the problems is on these. Is the, the number of faces you have, you see, like this, look, this big volume of this penthouse, right? Only has one, two, three, four, you know, ten faces, but if you zoom into this tree. You'll, you'll have a million little faces, right? So that's what it is, these, these plants are bogging down my drawing, but I like them, so I'm gonna leave them in there. Especially the, the plants that hang over the edge, I love, I love that effect, that's, that's awesome. So what the, the front elevation, I don't think I've actually even shown the front elevation, it's, it's real simple, you know, but. And, um, but, uh, again, it has the features that the program calls for, that's the front, and this is the back. What happened to my back elevation, man? Something happened, I need to get me some cars, we'll see if we can't find some cars. And for some reason, the floor plans are turned on, I can see that line is the floor plans. Turned on, see, I turned them off, and then I'll, I'll update that, let's see if they're turned on in the front elevation. No, and then, so let's go and see, also need to make a transition. Turn on the front, I need, I make a transition. Uh, for the, the drive, the driveway down to the street, the parking pad down to the street. But let's see if we've got any three D warehouse cars, modern cars, let's call them modern cars. Modern cars. I should've just said automobile. Let's get something white, because I don't wanna have any color. If you're doing a rendering, an artistic rendering, you know, the color is fine. Uh, that's something you would do on the front end of the project when you're trying to convince a client or something, but for construction documents. It would all be black and white, there wouldn't be any, you know, no color, and that didn't work at all, that was a bad search. If I just do car. 'Cause I know there's some pretty nice cars in here. I don't know, I'm get the feel, I get the, uh. Here's a Mercedes. That was a, here's an old BMW, let's put it in there. It also is not too, not too dark of a color. But you see, they didn't, they got, they got bored and looked, they didn't hide their lines, so. And see, this is, this is the race, the rat race you get into, or the, you start editing other people's messes and it, you know, you starts getting into time. I'm trying to get out of it, actually. Where is it, where is it? Won't let me out. Some gave, oh, this is the other thing they do, they troll you with this mess, where. They will create a model and put it in the warehouse, but you can't find the edges, so you, once you go into edit it. Then you're in, you're stuck in it, so you, all you can do is, uh, uh, undo, and then explode it. Either that, or they're just bad at, uh. CAD standards, let's do this, let's explode this again, and then we'll make a new group. Then what we'll do, I think you can do this little. Yeah, this little cheating, this little thing here, we go in and, oh, what is it, smooth, smooth. It should hide. Most of those lines. If this doesn't work, I'm gonna zap this car and forget about it, 'cause this is the, these are the rabbit holes you can go down in SketchUp. That can really hurt your productivity and your live streams. Let's go see what's happening. Never seen anything like that, dad, very, oh, yeah, well, the program kinda created it, we were given the program by the course. So. Uh, they said we had a ten meter square building, we had to have party walls. A party wall on each side, we had to have this many levels, each level had to have these. You know, features, you know, bedrooms, kitchen, bath, so the program kinda, uh, what did I do? What have I done? But see, this is the, this is, this is the rabbit hole right here. I found the rabbit hole. Let's see, there's another, yeah, smooth. Now, see. Exit, let's explode this. Now create a group. I'll go back in, now if you just have a few lines left over, you can go in and hide them. But you don't wanna get into where you're, you know, completely having to hide every single line. 'Cause then your, your productivity goes. La la land. But that's a neat little BMW, I like it, that's why I thought it would be kinda cool to, uh. What we'll do, we'll copy it and then we'll, we'll turn this one. If it doesn't crash my computer. Which I think it will. Here, I'll tell you one thing about SketchUp, is the frustrating thing about it is, one of the things is, and I've complained about this before, but nobody listens to me. Is that SketchUp literally only uses a single core of your processor, and I'm sure some. You know, some wheeler dealer, you know, programmer could tell me why, but. I, I don't, I don't know, it doesn't make any sense to me, I'll go, I'll go and my, my drawings will be half froze up, and I'll go to my resources. And only about thirty percent of my resources will be, be used, so I don't understand. I'm not a rocket scientist, Jim. Any other questions? So, I think I'm gonna stop here, I have a, I have an online meeting with a customer, uh, not about this project. But, uh, I just really kinda wanted to go over this and, and again, if you're interested, uh, this. This course is, I had a link, do I need to follow my own link here? In the, um, comment section for Harvard, uh, courses. That, this is just obviously one course, and, um. But they have all kinds of courses, uh, of course, you know, obviously this is not a, a paid promotion, but. If you're like me and love learning, and, um, I've always, I mean secretly when I was a kid, wanted to be an architect, but. My desire to build things overwhelmed that desire, and, um. So I did work in architecture for seven years while I was, I. That was my motive, I went to a vocational school, a building trade school in high school, I got out, worked for some, uh, contractors. Um, when I got enough experience there, I was able to get hired as a project manager in an architecture firm. And I did that for five to seven years, and then I started my construction company about twenty years ago. And, uh. So we designed most of, as a matter of fact, you can go, you can go here to my AT-Drafting.com. And you can see kinda, this is my, this is my modern cabin I'm gonna build out here in the woods, where I'm living now, and then this is a. This is a, a customer, Pat, out in Texas, or is it Arizona? Uh, it's a B barn, it's kind of a commercial building, um. This was a, a big. Three hundred thousand dollar garage we did for a guy, but you can go here to the projects map. You can zip, click on things, there's one in Alaska, I did a little project there. Um, you can do, the personal homes I've built, you can go here, if you zoom in on Chattanooga, go zoom in. And this is a modern house I designed and built. And this is our, this was the funky bungalow, you can't really see these unless you go to the website and kinda zoom in on them. Um, and this is a, um, contemporary house I built several years ago. There, but. What is this one? That's down in Rising Falls, but then I helped some people, oh, we did a. Um, a summer shop. And there, and I helped, uh, Chief Don over in, uh, Africa with some billet buildings, some barracks. And then we had, um, a little project in the Netherlands, but it's kinda, it's awesome, what was this? Oh, this was kinda Sonia's, uh, greenhouse was neat in, uh. I don't know if that, Melbourne, oh, here's the Guatemalan house, I did, that's funny, I accidentally clicked on that, this house I did for, in Guatemala. I did. That's funny. I accidentally clicked on that. This house I did for, in Guatemala for Eric. So. But you see um. There's always been an, I've always had this interest in learning architectural history. And um, I remember when I first started working for some architects, they were, they seemed so aloof and. I kinda get it now after listening to some of these lectures. It's part of the culture to sort of be. Aloof if you're an architect. Um, if you go and uh. What I'm, what I plan on doing is, is see if I can get permission uh to put, to preview some of the videos, some of the lectures. If I can, you'll see what I mean. Um. It's, they're awesome, but you know, the terminology, you just have to really, uh, architecture students really have to pay attention. Uh, there, there's no room for, you know, day, daydreaming, wanting to listen to these lectures because. There's so much, they're filled with so much terminology and history and philosophy. Architecture is really, I mean, it's study, it literally is the study of nature and. I mean, you've got math, physics, art, you know, history. It's just, I don't think people understand how, how deep it goes and uh, but it's awesome. You know, it's, it's an awesome uh industry and profession and uh. I, I call, I'm not a licensed architect, so I call my business AT Drafthing. It's a, it's ATs for artist and Tony. Uh. And I'm, I'm happy with the fact that I am a design build contractor. I would rather be on the, the building end of it. I had um. Uh, I remember one of the last few months, uh, I was actually, uh, I was actually um. An associate at the last architecture firm, which is the step before partnership and. Um, one of the things that bugged me was that we would have these little parties. We would work months on sets of drawings that were, you know, rolled up. They were that thick. And um. Once they would, we would print them up. We had, we had huge plotters in the office in the, in the back room. We would do all of our own plotting and. We would have these huge sets of drawings and we would send them out and as soon as they went out the door, we would have a party, you know? And I, and that struck me and it made me realize. That. That's their product, that role of drawings is their product. You know, and I wanted my product to be the building. You know, I wanted to, I wanted to be the one that built it. So I have no regrets. Not being able to go to architecture school, but I can do this and, you know, makes me feel like I'm. A learning and taking part in it, the education process uh of architecture. And getting a taste for, cuz this is definitely, this is definitely college level course. If you go, if you go through the whole thing, it's a, it's work. So. Anyway, I've rambled enough here. Uh, I just wanted to kinda share this. And where's my, where's my live stream? And um. And uh, hope you enjoyed it. If you got any questions, leave, leave me a comment. And go check out that uh, I put the link in the description. Go check out the, they have other courses. They have um. You know, math, physics, you know, other science based stuff. Uh, I, I haven't really checked out all of their courses. I've just been seeing the different courses as they come up in the email, the newsletters and things, so. Anyway, thanks a lot, guys, and I appreciate you watching and we will see you next time.